...of our medically fragile kids. We also agreed to an additional workday for 12-month employees. And we also agreed to some language changes in the article on layoff and reemployment in the way that people are notified. And in addition, we agreed to a longevity step J, which if an individual has been with the district for 30 years, they will be eligible to get additional longevity.
Any questions? Comments? Okay, let's go on to the next one. It's Tannenbaum. Thank you. Yeah. Tentative agreement with management confidential employees.
All right. Thank you very much. Management and confidential employees are not represented by a union. It is the recommendation of management that the management and confidential employees also be given a 5% salary increase like the rest of the employees in the district.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, none. Okay, we're finished with personnel at this point. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Regarding the tentative agreement with management confidential employees, I know that for the teachers and CSCE, the agreements are in the packet, and so we're able to see everything in writing. But for management and confidential employees, there's nothing, even though the packet says, "See attachments," there isn't anything. And so because of transparency, I think that it's fair that we see what management and confidential employees are getting as well in writing, even though they don't have a union.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, let me address that.
Yes, please.
I am sorry. It was on intent to include the salary schedules with the 5% increase on them, and unfortunately we didn't have them ready in time for printing of the agenda. They will certainly be in the board packet before any action. There are no other items besides the 5% on the salary schedules for either management or confidential.
Okay. Good. Okay, let's go to the next item, curriculum. Questions up here. Curriculum, please. That's number one.
At this time, I would like to invite the principal from Camden School to present her school plan.
All right. Okay. Good evening once again to the members of Inja Garcia, and good evening, audience, principal of Camden School. My standing is okay? Okay? Move it a little bit over. I can't see. Okay, so Camden School. Is it the top one? Okay, this one? Nope. Messed it up already. This one. Okay. Okay, thank you. Never use a clicker. Sorry. Okay, good. So the vision and mission of Camden School. The area of Camden School is dedicated to ensuring that students are prepared for college and career. And how are we going to do that? Well, we're going to provide access to resources necessary to acquire 3% of these learning skills. We're going to teach for understanding to enable our students to achieve mastery of central skills. Hold these ambitious learning goals for every student and teacher, adults as well as students. That's our vision and mission. And a little bit about Camden School. Current enrollment's about 875, English learners 49%, actually economically disadvantaged is 70%, and we have three foster students, and parental college education's about 26%. Sorry, I went a little crazy on that. Three focus areas, academic expectations, climate and culture, and parent and community. Couldn't help myself, okay? That's a fun. So we expect every student will meet academic expectations to successfully transition to middle school and beyond. And how are we going to do that? Well, we're going to make sure that our teachers have a professional development in all the areas stated up here. And we ensure that they're teaching Common Core, we're ensuring that they're leveling for ELD, and we have universal access, and we have new to our schools gateway and system 44 for third grade. But what happens if they don't know, if they didn't learn what they were supposed to? Well, we have lots of interventions. We've got individual learning folders, we've got phonics for reading, resource teachers new to our school. We have paid extra for a fourth grade teacher so we wouldn't have combos. That came straight out of our ALCAP, and that was a decision made last year. Want to make sure we did that. We do have one combo of two, three. We have Imagine Learning this year, and we have system 44 not only for third grades, paid for by the district, but we also are paying for a fourth grade teacher to give 45 minutes of gateways. I'm sorry, gateways is fifth and sixth, but I'm talking about after system 44. So system 44, the district is covering a third grade class, but we're actually picking up a fourth grade class. We started after-school programs. We started September the 2nd, so I think we're one of the first schools that started. But I wanted to get ready because I want it to be over before parent-teacher conferences. So we had our first session this past week, and we also started our Saturday Academy first time in a long time that Camden has had a Saturday Academy, and we're focusing on SEMA, and that started this Saturday. We had three classes. It's small, but it's a step in the right direction. We just need more teachers to want to actually teach on Saturday, and that's kind of hard. And of course, we still continue to have best. So our interventions, and this is part of our school climate. Just about everything up there, a lot of the schools have. When new to us this year will be circles training. We'll make sure that circles training is coming to our staff so that, you know, they're going to have that taken care of October the 2nd. And we have behavior modification in music. That's a little program put on by Mr. Rossi. These are students that otherwise would never get picked to play an instrument, and kids that are challenging to our staff, and he teaches them drums. So we have a little program going on there. Really good program, really special to see that. Let's see, we have bike safety week, we have emergency plans in every classroom. We also actually put in our plan to have a morning supervisor in the morning because we really had a hard time with traffic and a lot of little things. So we're paying a little extra for a 30-minute position there classified. What's our school climate? And then parent involvement, newsletters, volunteer opportunities, Rosetta Stone. We have coffee and conversation, something that I've done this year. Make sure that I'm meeting with parents regularly. I'm working really closely with the parent coordinator so we can put together monthly meetings, and we've already had two of them. And PTA is pretty strong on our campus, schoolside council, and ELAC. And community involvement, so we have a lot of community partners. RIF, of course, Bike Smart is a family out of Santa Cruz, and they come out every year for the past two years and do a bike rodeo with fifth grade free or charge grade program. U.S.A.L., the Panetta Institute, junior achievement comes every year, too. So these are people that come every year and they've been sponsoring Camden for a very long time. And the Hartnell Youth Program started last year with the drama, so that was really special for us. And Transportation Agency of Monterey County always supports a bike week, so we've had these community partners. And that's it. Thank you. Any questions?
Question.
Thank you very much. You know, that just proves how hard you're working and all the teachers are working, so thank you. Oh, yeah, thank you. A lot of work. First-year principal, a lot of work.
Not a first-year principal, but first year at Mission Park. I'm Jennifer Zanzo, so good evening, Dr. Lusa, school board members, audience, and most particularly those of you who have connections to Mission Park School. But everybody else will enjoy, I'm sure. Okay, so we'll start with the school demographics. We have 727 students this year, 64% are Hispanic, 13% are English learners, and 49% low SES. We do have one foster child, but I didn't want to put that fraction of a percentage. These are the percentages that are important to the state of California. They're the ones that are reported when you're testing. But they don't tell you enough about the school, as most people know. We have many other students with needs. We have students who come from adopted families, divorced families, families that have experienced recent deaths. We have students who struggle academically, but we get no extra funding for them. We have students who struggle with major behavioral and emotional needs, and we are dealing with them on a regular basis, and that impacts the ability to achieve in all of these demographics and any demographic or school. But the other part of the story is the positive part. We have parents. We have a lot of parents at Mission Park School and staff who work incredibly hard. They are there all the time, they have alarm codes, they have access. I'm sure other schools wish they had as much access, but Terry wishes they wouldn't set off the alarm. But if you could just see a room parent meeting at Mission Park School, I took pictures, but it was after I'd already sent in the slide presentation. It'll be on some future presentation where you have the entire cafeteria full of 23 teachers, because some were getting their air books that day, sitting next to one to two parents from every classroom who are committing to work through the year with them as a team and make sure those kids get a good education. We have academic achievement as our first goal, just like all the other schools, I hope. Math and English Language Arts, we are definitely trying to teach the 21st century learning through the Common Core State Standards. In science, however, we do have a lab that students get instruction once a week in grades K through sixth grade. They, PTA funds most of that, but we do use some of our LCFF funds to fund one hour of that science aid. We have visual and performing arts. Again, because of our PTA, we have an in-depth art instructor. She comes once a week and does Art Fridays with the kids, and it is phenomenal, the way they study Matisse and Monet and create true works of art that are on display in the spring. So feel free to come to our open house once I tell you when that is. We don't know yet, it won't be tonight, but I'll tell you in the spring. We have a glee club. Mr. Rossi also works at our school and does a glee club, and we have a huge talent show for the whole school in the spring. And we've exceeded our multipurpose room capacity, so we are always looking for a new place to hold it. For physical education, those are just power points. We have much more besides just run and fifth grade. PFT stands for Physical Fitness. In my acronym, it's Training, not just the testing, because our fifth grade teachers truly do start from the beginning with sit-ups, with push-ups, with going out there for the run. And I'm going to admit that at, more than at any other school I've ever worked at, you see classes outside on the yard multiple times during the day, spread out two classes together doing calisthenics and exercises and PE. It is a fully utilized playground, and they schedule it regularly. Technology, we are fortunate because we have iPads school-wide because of PTA purchases, but we also have the Chromebooks, and we really, really hope the thieves don't figure out where we're keeping all of them. We do also have some upper-grade classes that have started Bring Your Own Device programs, and they're working on that where the kids can in fact bring in iPods or phones to use technology in there. Okay, so then intervention. Of course, the minute I sat down tonight, I realized I somehow left third grade off. We do in fact help third grade. So I'll just make sure you see that we have intervention for KM first that is similar to what is provided everywhere in the district, independent learning folders for aides and kindergarten teachers to work with students. Not every school has kindergarten teachers that do it. We have phenomenal kindergarten teachers that do that. In first and second grade, we have phonics for reading. In third grade and fourth, fifth and sixth, we have a system 44/Read 180 program. And then for English learners, they obviously qualify for all of the above interventions, but they will also be getting Imagine Learning provided by the aides and the kindergarten teachers. We have a little rotation block after lunch. It is unlike other sites because we don't have as many English learners in one grade, so every teacher is not stopping to teach ELD. We do it on a pull-out basis. And then we're very proud that we, just by transfers and luck and good motivated teachers, we have four gladiators. I think we may actually have 10 math grant participants. After I sent this out to the teachers, they corrected me. And we have one Raleigh League teacher at our school, and all of that stuff spreads. Even if the teachers didn't go to the math grant, the ones who went are convincing everyone else that they should be using the Engage New York, the Common Core, and they are doing it. Goal two, culture and climate, just a few of the things we have. We have a very strong PBIS leadership team. They tell me what to do, I just try and support. There are monthly themes and incentives. We have, similar to other sites, the three Rs, responsible, respectful, and ready to learn. But when they start planning the incentives, the no tardy parties are run primarily by the teachers. If I'm on campus that day, I'm an extra person helping to supervise, but they make it happen. They are ready to start next month on, well, I think it's mid-October, we'll be doing the stay all day and play because we're noticing how many people pick up kids early. So the kids will be told, and the parents already got the heads up to start trying to schedule appointments late in the day, and then the kids who stay all day will get an incentive. And we reward with those catch-and-been-good coupons. In our school, that's must-ain, moolah-ah. And PTA helps a lot with the prizes for that. We try to build inclusive relationships. We have sticks and stones two days a week. We have, the Mission Park Athletic Club just got for us four soccer goals, so we have two fields of soccer that are a hot ticket on the yard right now. They did a jog-a-thon last year, and they continue to come and be an extra adult on campus during the lunch hour. They're trying to send out invitations now and recruit more so that they can work with the Playworks people. Playworks is taking off. We were lucky, we opened with one HASA running the Playworks program. You all read the newspaper articles, you should have it at your school, but it really is working at our school. And many of the classes have buddy classes, and we also have a lyceum connection with square foot gardening. That's not on there, but just to remind you, we reach out to other members of the community as well, and that class will start next Tuesday. Apparently last year, they only had one student for a while, but they have a lot of CSUMB volunteers who come into work and try and help get our garden going, and some parents from the school also help the classes have individual planner boxes. Student leadership, we are in the middle of our first round of conflict manager slash peer mediators. We're trying to blend what was already working at Mission Park with a little bit more the restorative justice language. So they've been being trained by Pasquale Moreno from Restorative Justice, and they have only three more training days before we'll let the first group hit the yards, and then I'll train the second group, because they're all dying to do it. The kids are phenomenal. And we want to start a student council in the spring and have a teacher who's already volunteered to run that. And then for parent and community involvement, I've kind of been stressing that. We do have a lot in the way of parent bodies on campus, volunteers you see all the time, and also financial support. Already mentioned the art teacher and the science lab aide. They've purchased a lot of technology, but it really is also in the people. I've learned as I'm getting around the campus and introducing myself to people, I thought I knew names when I knew 900 students at Camden, but at Mission Park, you need to know 700 students plus 1,400 adults, so I'm working on it. And they're there. We have gate security. I know you're wondering what that is, but we have the mom who just stepped up and said we need to keep the parents out of the hallways in the morning, and we need to teach the kids what to do, and she's out there every day at opening and closing to do it. We have parents who volunteer to just supervise that crosswalk. I try not to watch because we know we're supposed to be careful about safety, but most of the parents at the school step up and take on a role when they see something that needs to be done. And then I did want to advertise our Carnival in Silent Auction is the hugest, biggest fundraiser we have at the school. I know Mr. Stratton is already planning his donations, and anybody who's going to the Festival Familiar, please come over for our barbecue after. It's the same day, October 11th, but we have a huge Carnival in Silent Auction that really helps fund all those positions. And then, just because previously Janet has asked that we include budget information, of course, it was easy for me because I have the smallest budget. At Mission Park School, we only have two funding sources. We have the LCFF funding source, which is $79,742. Primarily, we spend it on instructional aids, instructional materials, and collaboration release time. We have unrestricted money, $31,800. Again, it's the paper. It's the paper. Instructional materials, collaboration release time, and copier agreements. I didn't put that as a major thing, but we do pay for that. And it's very important that you see that PTA supports us with pretty much one-third of our budget, $40,000 to $70,000 annually, gets spent on things such as science aid, instructional materials, technology, field trips, et cetera. And then, those are our students being respectful, responsible, and ready to learn. Questions?
I don't have any questions, but thank you for your enthusiasm and energy, you know, we're all on the way ahead. Please thank all the teachers and all the parents, all their participation, went through your budget, it's been amazing. Thank you for including the budget, because that really does help. I really like the format, I don't know about the rest of the board, but the format is crystal clear of what you're doing and how you're doing it, so thank you very much.
Any comment? Do you want to make a comment? I just wanted to thank Ms. Zanzo for doing her presentation and talking about the school and, you know, and communicating a lot of what's there. You know, recently, there's been, you know, a lot more exposure about some of the parents. The man right here with the camera, he always volunteers to do the DJing at many of these different events. The impact-
I had that written down by Carnival and then forgot to say it.
No, no.
They will be our DJs again, I know.
Yeah, it's, yeah. So there's different parents doing a lot of different things, and it's kind of telling. I mean, I think humor tells a lot. When we talked about having the smallest budget, people laughed like they totally knew. And, you know, without really saying it, June 9th, it was, you know, for a lot of parents at Mission Park, it was a very difficult meeting to hear how our school and our community was described. And really to talk about all the problems that we have or different things about our culture, and not really have anyone to stand up for us, to really say and set the story straight when they know Mission Park and they know we're not Carmel. And those $40,000 to $70,000, our kids working hard selling cookie dough, selling tickets. We're not a lot of rich parents, contrary to what a lot of people think. We're not Carmel. We're very much Salinas, we're very much proud of it. We're very much proud to be part of this community. And our kids, many of our kids are getting help and volunteered, and a lot more volunteering, and that's a great thing. But that budget and some of those extra things that other schools get really shouldn't continue where certain schools like Mission Park, Laurelwood, other schools that are not getting it, that really should. So there should be some equity and there should be a standard on how resources are allocated, and it shouldn't just be a joke that one school gets a lot less and others don't. So, thank you.
Thank you. This is the end from English learner reclassification criteria.
Good evening, board members, superintendent, colleagues, community members. My name is Mary Pritchard, and I'm the director of bilingual and migrant programs, and I'm here tonight just to give you information. Over half of our students are currently classified as English learners in the district. Annually, we review their progress towards achieving English proficiency, and each district has an adopted reclassification criteria. With the introduction of AB484 that suspended the CST testing and the CMA testing for all students, last school year, one of the criteria, which is a student's performance on an objective assessment of basic skills in English, is no longer available. So the first criteria, there are results on the SELT test, that still exists, we still have that in place, the teacher evaluation, which is the grades, as well as the teachers fill out the SOLAM, the Student Oral Language Observation Matrix. We also consult parents as required by law, but the district has to come up with an interim criteria to use for this school year while we have no test scores from the previous year. We were waiting on direction from the state. We did receive a letter from the Department of Education on August 11th with some guidelines on what type of assessment we can look at, what type of material we can look at. So I will be bringing forward an interim, a proposed interim criteria. We, with the timing and the timing of our board meetings and the timing of our committee meetings, we began the process as required by law to have our DLEC committee look at that criteria before we bring it to you. So they'll meet again next week, and they'll give input, as well as our English learner coordinating council meeting, which is comprised of representatives, teachers from every school. They meet again later on this month. So at the October 13th, we'll be able to bring forward a proposed interim criteria that we'll use for this year and until such time as the state reestablishes an English Language Arts test statewide, and we have further direction from the state. So we are gathering what other districts are doing in the area as well as outside of the area, and looking at what assessments our students already take because we really don't want to give them another assessment. We could take our time, but we do have a group of 83 sixth graders who are potential candidates for reclassification, so we want to review those students before the October 31st deadline to take the annual SELT, to see if any of them would meet that criteria and if they would not need to take that assessment again this year. But all of our students in third through fifth will be reviewed for their progress after taking the annual SELT again this year. Questions?
Any questions? Board members? Okay. Next, please. Thank you very much. Next item. Professional development overview.
Good evening again, superintendent, Lusa, board members, esteemed colleagues. I don't know if I'm going to be any better this than you, because I'm not used to a clicker either. I've been asked to provide a brief, two-minute overview of professional development that's going on. I think, Carol, I thank you for the indication that you think that there are some changes and more of a menu and options for teachers. There. There you go. Our strands is here are essentially, the PD is centered around Common Core, math, language arts, or ELD. School culture and climate with definitely an emphasis on restorative justice trainings, positive behavior intervention supports with our National Youth Forum Grant, with the Monterey County Office of Education, CSUMB, and the Santa Clara County Office of Education. And then, of course, we do have a huge push with technology, specifically making sure that we have teachers proficient with the Google apps for the Google apps in education, and also really starting to look at digital citizenship for our students. Okay, keep drawing. It would be two minutes.
I'll show her which one. You're hitting the right arrow on the green circle.
I got it. Wrong arrow, I hit the left arrow. Okay. This is just, this month alone, what we have going on, some of them are all-day trainings, some of them specifically the collaborations or the MacBook Air trainings are after-school. But that's just one month of training, so there's lots of opportunities. This is what we have going on this coming Friday, which has everything from math grant to the Tech U. We have our kindergarten teachers being trained in the desired results developmental profile. GLAD teachers will have GLAD follow-up sessions by grade level so they get to work together collaboratively. The same thing for Raleigh. One of our new principals, Susanna Lowry, is going to be providing training in the new California ELD standards, and their correlation with the English Language Arts Common Core standards. Susanna has come to us as an ELD coordinator from the Sonoma County Office of Education and a consultant with CDE from the San Joaquin County Office of Education. We also are, oh, and then SPED, the SPED department is going to have a PBIS overview training specifically looking at the intervention portions of Tier Two and Tier Three. We, I'm really happy that this year I've made arrangements for our classified staff to be participating in the Playworks training, the HASAs, the best HASAs in the new HASAs, which are the homework and supervisor of activities. Along with our regular new supervisors are going to be meeting all day long with the program managers to really look at improving the program they're offering. We have interviews going on this week and hope to hire up to eight new HASAs this week. And then also, we have restorative justice practices from the restorative justice partners are coming in, and they're going to do an all-day training with, we're really targeting our bus drivers and food service employees, because when we have our other trainings during the school days, those folks don't get to come because they have essential jobs, and we can't get subs for them. So we're trying to make sure that on September 12th and October 17th, our next day, that there, they do have training provided. And also the health days were offered. So we're trying to make sure that on September twelfth and October seventeenth, our next day that they're, they do have training provided. And, um, and also the health days were offered, um, a training with safety plan with diners ceremony. This alone is the Tech University. There's twenty-one, um, different sessions. They're hour and forty-five minutes that teachers can sign up to go to. And there's, it varies, everything with some ORS instruction, STAR reading, uh, Google Docs, Imagine Learning, um, all kinds of really cool things going on. We will throughout the year then have with our math grant, grade level collaborations that will be happening, that every grade level will meet twice a year with the coach, besides having coaches in their classrooms to help them do the lessons and any instructional coaching they like. Project Lab all through the year, we're going to be having again, follow-up sessions with, um, grade level collaborations where they'll be talking units and curriculum and lesson planning. Um, and also with Raleigh with the California Reading and Literature Project. They are going to be doing, following the very same model. This is just another schedule, just to show you that we're full of trainings. And here we have the PBIS tier one and the PBIS tier two where we're going to be, we have three schools that are going to be joining the high school district to begin tier two. And then again, as I said, we have restorative justice. We have three cohorts who've classified this fall. And then with certificate, we're going to have four more cohorts this year. And that's about it. I did want to follow up, Mr. Hoffman, you asked for an update on PD three sixty. You, um, suggested, it was a really good suggestion that I bring into principals to find out if any of them would like to pilot it at their sites. And principals right now, none have come forward. Um, so it is on hold. There is no PD three sixty, that program happening. We do have lots going on and I'll keep you posted.
On PD three sixty, we still get strategy of the week, the email alert for it. And I just found out that I kept trying to go edivation, which would ask for my email and password and then it would lock me out. But if I just click, just watch the video, I can do that. So we're getting the strategy of the week anyway.
I don't know how long that's going to take last. I know they're really good though, that they, they are-
So, I mean, it is available for those that want to watch it.
I'm just wondering, um, what will be the process if, if we're looking at PD three sixty again? You'll bring it back for information? Yeah, it would be if a site by site, if the site wanted to see if, well, one of the things that was really suggested, and I think it was one of you three ladies, that there would at least be a, a certain amount of polling and buy-in from the staff. And so I've asked principals who were interested if they could at least get a seventy-five percent participation rate at their school site for people who wanted to participate. So that was a criteria I set.
Also, could you break it down on what the cost it would be for if one school just decided they wanted to do it?
It depends on the number of users. And so our school size, but yeah, it would be, I would have to identify the site, the number of users and ask them for a bid for a proposal. And then I would bring that as a, a information item.
Does it seem, it was very expensive for the, for us to use it?
Yeah, that was four hundred teachers. Yeah. So, so thirty, thirty-five teachers is going to be much.
I have a question. I'm just curious about how many people are using the free sites? You know, we wouldn't have to be, I mean, there, there, I'm sure there are some. And I'd like comparison. I mean, are they as good or are they worse or whatever? Yes, go ahead.
The math grant, they're not using PD three sixty, they're using Engage New York, which is a bit different, but the, but the Common Core lessons are all are on Engage New York.
Right.
There's free sites, Lorraine was talking about with Stanford.
With the math grant, with the math grant, we were turned on, turned down to Stanford. Stanford offers free classes for teachers and the videos there are absolutely amazing. They're Common Core, they're engaging, and they're free.
Well, I'd like a comparison before we spend money on something else.
I, I, there's so much free stuff, there's, okay, let me help, better way of putting it. There's so much available free that we're almost overwhelmed with the amount of information we can find at this time. Um, I, I honestly don't see the need to spend the money.
Any more questions?
We have a website together with all those links.
Engage New York's on the website now. Yeah, it's on the services, there's a link.
How do we get this?
I heard that it's going to be on the district.
No one more? Okay, under fifth. Mrs. Stratton?
Top of the evening. This will not take long. Lori had the lion's share of our professional development for all of our employees in the district. This matrix here, one page, no click here, a minute is needed. Our IT department runs a Tech University at Laurelwood. They'll be teaching certified staff, Google apps, iPads, and Chromebooks. Um, and as you can see, in October, we'll come back and do some other training and then integrate it throughout the year, customer service, customer service, customer service, respect, climate and culture. Transportation, it's really good that we can do the restorative justice and I just heard now we have a third iteration of that. We have people scheduled for September and October from both transportation and food service. Maintenance, I'll be down doing vehicle safety, vehicle inspections and talking about safe driving as we get into limited daylight and more water on the roads. Inshallah, you know, hopefully it'll rain one of these days. Our operations in custodial, we had a great Forbo class. What's Forbo? It's the new generation of a linoleum. It's much harder than VCT. The beauty of it is it costs more, but it lasts twice as long. So you pay half as much more, it lasts twice as long, but you don't put any chemicals on it. So you don't have to strip it and re-wax it. You just use soap and water, you let it dry, and you use a little spray to sheen it up. We gave all our head custodians that training on the third of September and they'll do that for the custodians on the twelfth of September and again on the seventeenth of October. The payback, after fourteen months of the new Forbo, it is paid for itself, all the additional cost. And after that, all the chemicals you don't use and you don't dump back in the environment is a benefit to us. We accrued the dollars that we don't spend on those stripping chemicals and the environment gets better. Finally, the business office, we'll have a talk on student demographics in September and talk about site bank accounts. And then we also just focus on better customer service, better communications, better understanding. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? No? I've got a question over here.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
I just have one question for you, Jerry, with regard to the break-ins and whatnot. Is the two thousand dollars deductible per each occurrence or is it per year or?
It's for each occurrence. We're trying to wrap it up together to be able, in one, in filing one report, to be determined. It was one thousand last year, it just went to two thousand.
Would it make sense since we are going to be facing this, you know, we're going to keep buying technology and it's going to be a target? Maybe we should put a budget together for some sort of safe area and put it in, you know, like a, I don't know, saves maybe, you know, to, to lock these things away and keep it a little bit more secure. Save some money.
We're, we're looking at enhancing how we secure our schools, including the Chromebooks and the iPads that are coming. I would tell you that they went right to a locked cabinet in a locked classroom and broke it open and took them out. So we'll look at better ways. There's two ways to do that. More tagging of equipment. So once it goes away, we can, just like your iPhone, you hit a button and you can tell where it is and you can find it, whether it's in your car or in someone else's car. We're looking at more cameras, passive security, so we can see who's on campus and cover those target areas. We have twenty-two cameras at Cameron now, I believe. I've got fourteen going into, to Lincoln. And we'll camera up our sites so everyone can feel secure that the perimeters are covered and we know who's coming and who's going during hours of darkness or other hours on weekends.
Just going back to the security, they know where to find the technology in the classroom and they're really happy for the teachers to cart seven Chromebooks and put them back and you're at risk of them dropping them. It's more than twenty-five pounds on our job description. But Ken, I, I would love to see more cameras at Laurelwood. We're, that's our biggest fear because we were hit hard two years ago and we never got any replacements. So I know that's one of our fears and we're a small, quiet neighborhood school.
No one is safe, no one is secure. The bad guys know that technology is out there statewide. And we spent five hundred thousand dollars and, and we will continually look and Laurelwood's on the list for cameras also.
Yeah, and they just do. They just use a screwdriver, pop the cabinets open, pop the file cabinets open, leave the screwdriver on your desk to take off. I know, that's what, they found the tool in my classroom. Yeah.
You can't make it so that it's impossible.
Next meeting, uh, I'm gonna-
Tomorrow.
What time is it going? Ten minutes to, to nine. Okay. Um, next meeting we're having is the twenty-second of September, the regular board meeting, okay? Be at six-thirty. And then one October thirteenth at six-thirty as well. And then-
There's a special meeting on Laurel.
Future agenda items, board members.
I have a couple that I would, I'd like to ask for, two information items. One, perhaps you could bring the safety issues to us, let us know what's going on unless it's giving up information that the bad guys would know. If you could just tell us what is being done as far as the safety issues and the information item, that would be helpful. And also, I think we need to have an information item with recommendations from the staff for a better alignment with the Brown Act so that we, we comply and we're doing what we learned in our training. If you could bring that back to us. And then lastly, I'd like to see a study session with special education, everything that's going on. Tell us what's happening, where it's happening, et cetera.
Would need to happen in the future.
Yeah, in the future, right.
Yes.
Question?
I have, uh, yes, I, I would like to have a discussion or more information on the tool immersion program versus bilingual program. And there's so much more information now about how people learn, how our brains function. Uh, I, I'd like to have more information on learning theory versus what we do versus practice and how we can modify our practice to increase our learning. So anyway, there's a lot of information out there and I'd like to share it with the teachers that are probably-
Weather, it's okay. Thank you. Anything else?
Oh, I forgot.
Go ahead.
The value of learning second languages included. More information on that.
We don't have any other items to, the agenda is so closed. Adjourned. Next meeting. Thank you very much for being here. Thank you very much for participating. And I look forward to seeing you again.